Okay, at ten o'clock and we're waiting on this meeting in order. First of all, I'd like to welcome everybody here and appreciate you coming out and showing your interest in county business. And before we get started, I want to ask Chris Hubert if he'll leave us in a work of hours while we're standing here.
Heavenly Father, thank you to this state. You give us such a beautiful day outside and thank you for your goodness to us to be able to live in this country. Lord, I pray today for this fiscal court. I pray to the judge and the master's lord as they do the work of the people of Brackford County. May it be pleasing to you. May we have the wisdom today in decisions that has been made. Thank you, God, for all that you do for this county and our counties around. And please watch over us, Lord, and help us to do your will. We ask you so, Jesus.
Amen.
Let me believe this is the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
To, I promise to introduce Chris first. I don't know how many of you are known of him, but I've known him when he was leaving Willmore. It's been a few days, but he's a retired state trooper. He's a state representative in District 84, which that's what we're part of now. He, like I say, was a state trooper for-
Twenty-two years.
Twenty-two years and then he retired and he came back when he was pastor of Bible Baptist Church and now Chris is pastor of Gospel Light Church in Perry County. And like I say, he's been instrumental in this Trail Authority program that we started. And we've got $2 million now toward Chris. Is that what it's been or just-
As far as the budget for the-
Right.
Yes.
Through the state and a lot of people don't know how far it's come along, but KRMMD has really made headway the last couple of years.
Yes, sir.
And main goal is to try to hook into Happy Island, McHoyes, and run it all the way through Kentucky. And it's a regional project and it's amazing when you go to a meeting and have many of the 19 county representatives there.
Yes, sir.
And Chris has been the one who's done that. But more importantly to me, he's a brother of the Lord's. And you've got something you want to say, Chris?
No, I just introduce myself. You can introduce me well, but I live in Chabies, so just over a couple of hills. And I'm thankful to be redistricted back to in the Brackford County and Alzey County. Alzey before Perry County and half of Harlan. And so I don't represent Harlan anymore. I'm really closer to home and I'm excited about working with the county and getting the trail system established. Really, we've got 19 counties right now that have passed resolutions that come to the meetings and it's been a big, a big help to West Virginia. Last year, their ATB Trail System brought in $38 billion to eight counties. And so that can be a big, big help to all of us in this region. And so I'm thankful to be here today and I look forward to working with all of you seeing Brackford County move forward in our district. Thank you, Judge.
Thank you. Okay, first order, well, first thing we need to do, Becky's not able to be here today and I need to make an, have a motion to allow Ashley to keep the meeting for today's meeting. Do we have a motion?
Motion.
Sure.
Donnie Bush?
Aye.
Roy Opley?
Aye.
Ray Moore?
Aye.
Alms Kinscher?
Aye.
And Curry. But also I've got a couple of things to add to the agenda. Number 16 will be the Watts Pond Deer Park Department. Give us an explanation and their animal services, see at the mall and discuss insurance. And then also number 17, David Baker's here from Craig and he's got some stuff that he wants to go over with us on, on the radio and stuff that's been submitted through Home Police Security and other things. So you all have anything to add on it?
Yeah, we've got a few items here, Judge. First one, consideration of possible actions concerning the Brackford County makes a tax ordinance. Also discussion of possible actions concerning the Harper funding. And I think Karen Rivers here for the Honey Festival meeting. And we've got, we're going to have another item, discuss the 911 coordinated phone service.
Okay, I follow that for honey pay for Karen.
Karen, Karen, Chris, the Honey Festival meeting.
Y'all got to have one of them next question, man?
The 911 coordinated phone service.
911 phone service?
Yeah.
I don't know if I have Janie on there.
I got a, I got a 22. I guess would be payment of credit cards. 23 would be a $75,000 transfer. General Bureau. And then 24 will be, Bill Lander has requested his sick time paid.
Is the sick time paid or is he not on?
Yes, that was 24.
Is that it?
It's in the car on our, on our, it's already on there.
Okay.
Just for you to make sure you take a vote to adopt that.
Motion to go ahead and adopt this, these additional add-ons of the agenda. Do we have a motion?
Motion.
Roy Opley?
Aye.
Ray Moore?
Aye.
Alms Kinscher?
Aye.
Donnie Bush?
Aye.
All right, first order of business, consideration approval of the minutes. Special week in April 7, 2022. Regular meeting April 26, 2022. Special week in April 7, 2022. Regular meeting May 24, 2022, and special meeting May 27, 2022. Do we have a motion?
Motion. We have, I think we emailed the last two meetings there, May 24th and then May 27th, but the copy of the message is not in the packet.
Okay.
For those two meetings.
Is that one?
For those two meetings, I just missed.
Is that one you emailed? Okay, so you're exempting the regular 24th meeting and 27th meeting out of the motion?
Yeah, I would do that.
Okay. Do we have a motion?
Motion.
Count Saig?
Motion failed, like the second.
Oh, I'm sorry, I didn't hear. Roy Opley?
Aye.
Ray Moore?
Aye.
Alms Kinscher?
Aye.
Donnie?
Aye.
Motion carries. Consideration approval of the second reading of the Brackford County District Board and the budget for year 2022 and 2023. Do we have a motion?
Motion. David?
Okay, one thing I'm going to ask is if, I've got a copy of the first budget back and a couple of things here I want to point out and make sure that y'all realize that you have done before we take a vote on this thing. Some of these are really not very good budgeting to me, like our utilities. We've already been out $60,201. We still got a whole month of bill to pay, actually two months later bill. And y'all have budgeted $53,000 for next year. Did y'all realize that you have done that? And then like on Judic's Center, where we've had $172,000 life here, it's $75,000 budgeted.
That one.
And you're budgeting $60,000 for this year.
That one's probably okay. That one, the reason it's a highlight, she remembers the two, two that went in.
Yeah, that was an insurance claim on too.
Yeah, we got it back, but it still shows as an expenditure. That's why the numbers are high.
Exactly what, you remember exactly what that was?
It was $85,000 up front and then after that, it was whatever the maintenance, the other maintenance stuff was behind it. So it probably cost $100,000.
Okay. And then even on our utilities, we've already been out $72,000, had $80,000 budgeted for last year. That's probably going to be a pretty good budget, but y'all got 70 in the budget. Then even on the contables, on gas, y'all went from $1,000 budget down to zero for contables. But the one who, one that up fifty to most is the Senior System Program. We have done $45,000 every year since I've been in here as county judge and y'all have budgeted it down to $0. I think I mentioned that to you last time when y'all done the first reading, but I just don't see how. And then even on the renewal returns, you did allow $5,000. We had $10,000 budgeted for last year. It's almost like you just targeted and we took everything out.
We took the tax out, Judge.
Then another one is the Honey Festival and hurried his fair general charity with $15,000 and y'all have $0 and all that out. And then, then all you built, we got $83,000 and y'all have, we had 50 budgeted and you budgeted early for this coming, this coming year. And on membership, at 13, we've already been out $13,736 and had 15 budgeted. You got $5,000 budgeted for the new court coming in. And even the training benefits, it was, we've already been out $18,740, we had $19,500 budgeted and you're going to budget $5,000 for a new administration coming in? Do any of y'all want to elaborate on that? Now I've got one more thing here on the corner of the thing. They've already submitted their budget, but you're adding $700 for a telephone for the coin? Y'all want to let me, hold on here?
We'll take it out of 1% tax from this budget. We didn't make cuts.
Do we want that?
We took out a 1% tax on it. That was a tax, but it works in this county. They're going to have to be some cuts when you do that. That's what we did.
So you're going to target the thing or is to-
We'll take care of that.
Make the coins that you're putting off face and deck out?
We'll take care of that from then, the agenda items.
Ray Moore? Alms Kinscher?
Aye.
Donnie Bush?
Aye.
Roy Opley?
Aye.
No, no, also motion carries. Consideration approval, approval rates for the new condition report. Do we have a motion?
Motion.
Count Saig?
Saig.
Alms Kinscher?
Aye.
Donnie Bush?
Aye.
Roy Opley?
Aye.
Ray Moore?
Aye.
Count Saig?
Saig.
Donnie Bush?
Aye.
Roy Opley?
Aye.
Ray Moore?
Aye.
Consideration approval, May 22 financial statements. Do we have a motion?
Motion.
Count Saig?
Saig.
Donnie Bush?
Aye.
Roy Opley?
Aye.
Ray Moore?
Aye.
Alms Kinscher?
Aye.
Consideration approval of May 22, Judic Center Corporation Fund Record. Do we have a motion?
Motion.
Count Saig?
Saig.
Roy Opley?
Aye.
Ray Moore?
Aye.
Alms Kinscher?
Aye.
Donnie Bush?
Aye.
Consideration approval of Fun Activity Report.
Motion.
Saig.
Ray Moore?
Aye.
Alms Kinscher?
Aye.
Donnie Bush?
Aye.
Roy Opley?
Aye.
Consideration approval of Budget Transfer Number 12-001. Do we have a motion?
Motion. We have some personnel issues dealing with that transfer. I think we should go into executive session and discuss it.
Nothing to say again, I didn't hear what you said.
Budget transfer, Budget Transfer 12-001, dealing with personnel issues. I think we need to go into executive session and discuss it.
Okay, we do have a lot of personnel. How many, how many this time have we got just long we on that list or haven't been paid? Any of them?
I got eight.
No, there's like twenty.
Twenty of them?
Four.
They made last night.
No, I've gone back, no, 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 no. That's, that's exhaustion of nine, eight. You're talking about-
No, there's like twenty now.
Okay, we're discussing it. How you going to do it?
Sir, you're not, Roy Opley made a motion to approve a budget transfer, but you're saying you want to go into the executive session.
I'd like to go into executive session concerning personnel issues with this transfer.
Okay.
Are you making a motion to do that now or are you going to hold it until the end of the meeting?
Yeah, we're going into the executive session at the end of the meeting. Consideration approval of minimum fund transfer back number 12-001. Do we have a motion?
No.
Count Saig?
Dealing with the budget transfer.
No, this is just a cash-
This is general fund transfer.
This is a cash movement so I can pay the jail bills. We moved $70,000 from general to jail, cash only, to then general to LGA, $20,000. $70,000 will be used for inmate housing bill and medical and then 20,000 will be to pay the animal shelter fees and normal stuff that you have to pay on top.
So you want to discuss that in executive session?
No, 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 I want to talk to the board of the budget transfer. This is cash.
Okay, we need to make a motion, do we have a second?
Saig.
Roy Opley?
Aye.
Ray Moore?
Aye.
Alms Kinscher?
Aye.
Donnie Bush?
Aye.
Motion carries. Consideration approval of payment of legal vendors claim. Do we have a motion?
No.
Count Saig?
We discussed this piece prior concerning the contract. And I think Mr. Miller's, that's based comments concerning that, Brackford County Minister of Code, Chapter 7, program B, wherever contract in the county shall be authorized and approved by the fiscal court, opposed by HQ, by the county's executive, which you failed to do. And also, progress C, every contract of the county shall be approved at the formance legality by the county attorney, which has not been done to my knowledge.
Donnie, you don't believe we're done in emergency, state emergency, I mean that's what we're doing.
No, state emergency's over in March.
I'm going to see if there's a motion. Ray Moore?
No.
Alms Kinscher?
No.
Donnie Bush?
No.
Roy Opley?
No.
No, but Alms, a motion failed. Consideration approval of open award bid for years 2022, 2023, recurring service fee and profit. I'm really just shocked.
I have a list of all the things that need to talk about before we leave, I guess. All the things that need to be bided.
Okay. Well, there's a lot of things. The only thing that's been bided on is petroleum, the chem, the chemical, the water treatment bid at the Judic Building. Got two bids on PM for the Judic Building and got three night bids.
Two of them is kind of just the, continue to apply every year.
What's that?
The shop supplies and the dental supplies.
Uh, turns up in the last couple of years, so nobody bided on cleaning supplies, no?
Um, the PAXFergs.
The PAX?
PAXFergs, yeah.
Okay, I've already opened the gas bill, the petroleum, pursuit of petroleum, which we just got one bid on, it's a Giffey Mark. Twenty cent below the street right on diesel, offer of diesel and gasoline, which be regular street right.
Actually, I forgot one.
Do we need to like, do you want to have the-
I forgot one bid.
You give it to him, Kim, sir?
No, it's this one. It's on face of trouble.
So since there's only one, do we want to make a motion to give Giffey Mark the fuel bill?
Motion.
Fuel bill?
Motion.
Did you say motion, Opley?
Saig.
Okay, Donnie, you say, you made a motion on fuel.
Roy Opley. I kind of made it same time.
It don't matter. Donnie Bush, when, did you say it right?
Yes, sir.
Alms Kinscher?
Aye.
Donnie Bush?
Aye.
Roy Opley?
Aye.
Do you want to get the fuel bill? I guess I do. What's it want, what's it?
Yes.
Night bill, thank.
You want the fuel?
Fuel, yes.
Do you want?
The first bid is Jackson, Alakor, Plum. Uh, looked like the only thing they've bided on is plasket. Six inch, 20 foot is 112, 25. Eight inch is 181 even. Fifteen inch for 20 foot is 311, 70. Eighteen inch is 411, 70. Thirty inch is $1,003.70. Forty-eight inch is 3199, 99. And sixty inch is 3499, 99. That's Jackson Electric. He's got two bids in here. Okay, I'm going to start with this and if we do blow up order and that's like a 10 dollar order and with that emergency, I think we could probably work toward that, but a six inch is 57, 72. Eight inch is 89, 20. Twelve inch is 153, 40. Fifteen inch is 198, 65. Eighteen inch is $300.30. Twenty-four inch is 482, 30. A thirty inch is 745, 16. A thirty-six inch is 971, 10. Forty-eight inch is 1575, 08. And a sixty inch is 2369, 65. Uh, galvanized pipes, a twelve inch is 1880. A fifteen inch is 773, 50. Eighteen inch is 928, 8, a 928, 20. A twenty-four inch is 1268, 54. A thirty inch is 111. A thirty-six inch is 1856, 40. Forty-eight inch is 2475. A sixty inch is 34, 35, 16. And a seventy-two inch is 4199.
The galvanized is a little different. They run from 16 gauge to 10 gauge and then we've got two different corrugations. So when I price like in the 72, 60 and 72 would be a thinner gauge. Probably wouldn't want that thinner gauge, probably want it, probably around 12 or 14 gauge, I expect that.
Okay, and then if there's all galvanized and special orders for $250 picked up, we can go pick them up and go into $250 payment on steel. But then here on, on plasket, but this is a different grade. This is if we buy the pipes individually, 12, and it'd be a $35 charge on all these pipes.
To deliver.
Right.
Yep.
And 12 inches, 251, 63. A 15 inches, 327, 45. An 18 inches, 458, 7. Twenty-four inches, 732, 29. A 30 inches, I think that's 1082, 35, for sure. Thirty-six inches, 1408, 47. A 48 is 2328, 83. And a 60 is 4325, 16. And that's Brackford Building. And then the last one is Dustin Stone.
Dustin who?
S U M N E R. Okay, these are priced a little bit different. I guess plasket, if we pick them up, I imagine in fact, plasket if they deliver to us, $84 for a six inch. $155 if they deliver. Let's just go ahead and do it without the- Let's just go ahead and do it without the delivery charge, because I mean, we already picked our pipe up, and it's going to be easier to keep up with. Eight inch is one forty-six. Twelve inch is two hundred. Fifteen inch is two sixty-four. Eighteen inch is, I think that's three fifty-six, fifty, yeah, yeah, I got it. Twenty-four inch is five eighty-two even. Thirty inch is eight sixty even. Thirty-six inch is eleven hundred dollar even. Forty-eight inch is seventeen sixty-one even. And a sixty inch is, three thousand thirteen dollars and fifty cents, and about half, probably thirty-two and fifty if they deliver. Just gonna take a little time, I guess, to compare apples to apples. But we do a bulk order and, we do a bulk order, uh, Breth, Brethick Building buys way, way cheaper. Did y'all write the prices down to keep up with those? We look at what Brethick had done on, on, on ten thousand dollar order, no word close to even in the ball, those are being in the ball game.
That may not be a ten thousand dollar order, depends on size of the pipe, and it'd be to get trouble, it could be less than ten thousand, but I think they'll keep it.
And even if you look at, like, for example, on a twelve inch, uh, Justin. Well, only two that bid on six and eight inch was Jackson and, um, Justin.
Dustin.
Dustin. Dustin is eighty-four on six inch versus a hundred and twelve on Jackson, Alacray. One forty-six on eight inch. Uh, one eighty-one on Jackson, Alacray. And then when you go to his twelve inch, Dustin is two hundred. Jackson, Alacray is two thirty-one, Brethick Building is two fifty-one. And again, I kind of re- re- do that, I don't, what y'all think about? Or do we actually regret to bid on?
Fifteen, two sixty-four, you got, you got what?
Go now.
Fifteen is two sixty-four, haven't you?
Yeah, two sixty-four, then three eleven, the next best price, and then three twenty-seven. And then on the eighteen inch, three fifty-six, fifty for Dustin. Four levels for Jackson, Alacray. Four fifty for Brethick Building. Twenty-four inch is five eighty-two. Brethick Building, seven thirty-two. Jackson, Alacray, seven oh nine ninety-nine. Then the next on thirty inch is eight sixty from Dustin. Ten eighty-two from Brethick. Ten on three from Jackson, Alacray. Thirty-six inch is thirteen fifty from Jackson, Alacray. Eleven hundred from Dustin. Fourteen oh eight from Brethick. Forty-eight inch is seventeen sixty-one from Dustin. Thirty-one ninety-nine from Jackson, Alacray. Twenty-three, twenty-eight from Brethick Building. A sixty inch is three thousand thirteen from Dustin. Forty-three, twenty-five from Brethick Building. Thirty-four ninety-nine from Jackson, Alacray.
Let the motion go to Brethick, sir.
With the ten thousand dollar.
Who's got the low price?
Now, when you take the one bid, uh, on Brethick Building on the bulk order is, eighty-seven, seventy-two for a six inch. Uh, the next bid price is, uh, Dustin at eighty-four dollars. And then a eight inch is one forty-six. And Dustin at eighty-nine, twenty from Brethick Building. Twelve inch is, uh, two hundred from Dustin and one fifty-three, forty from Brethick Building. Fifteen is one ninety-eight from Brethick Building. Two sixty-four from Dustin. Three fifty-six, fifty for twenty-four inch from Dustin.
I guess with eighteen inch, Dustin, three fifty-six, fifty.
It was eighteen, what did I say?
Said, ah, something.
Okay.
That's twenty-four.
And then eighteen inch is three hundred dollars and thirty cents from, from Brethick. Twenty-four inch is five eighty-two from Dustin. Four eighty-two, thirty from Brethick. Thirty inch is eight sixty from Dustin. Seven forty-five, sixteen from Brethick. Three from Jackson. Thirty-six is eleven hundred dollars from Dustin. Nine seventy-one, ten from Brethick. Forty-eight inch is seventeen sixty-one from Dustin. Forty-eight inch is six, fifteen seventy-five from Brethick. Then on the sixteen inch is three thousand thirteen dollars and fifty cents from Dustin. Twenty-three, sixty-nine, sixty-five from Brethick.
So, the bulk price, Brethick Building, got the cheapest price.
Yeah.
Kind of lower price, Brethick's lower than for a pipe, with Dustin.
Yeah, it's still regular, yeah, Dustin and then.
Is that Dustin, is that somebody local?
Some, he has a name, he's local, uh, I didn't know he said that, man.
Uh, if you're taking a federal. Federal ID number, yeah, five, six, eight, fifty-seven, seventy.
I'm not a scot. He's local.
Jameson, Jameson, K, little, D, mail, dot com.
So, he's working for Jack.
W B D.
He's working, he's back. Dustin's working.
And Dustin, some are running on the back of the bid. I'll hear about Boy Hall, Jackson, and Dustin. Do we have a motion to go ahead and award it to, again?
Are you, are you gonna go by the individuals, or are you gonna buy the bulk?
Well, it was just advertised for pipes. I wonder if we are to, give, give, uh, the other two to change the bid at a bulk price, but ain't very fair to Brethick. Because they gonna know what their prices are. May, maybe Matt, well, he got some number on there, yeah, it's on the list. I wonder if you could hope to call Jackson, Alacray, and then national, maybe go to the bulk price together. We're, we're not live, are we, cameras?
Yeah.
Not live. And all three, all three of these people are local, I guess, Ja- Jameson, Jameson, Lill, and Brethick Building, Dan, Pan, for Gill, and Jackson, Alacray, Ben Scotty. I don't know.
He said apples, apples. We're bulk orders, not apples, apples.
No, but maybe it's something that we need to locate, if we can, we can do a ten thousand dollar.
We don't read them.
Say shop around? Is that your decision?
No, we don't, both, we don't read them.
Yeah, we didn't feel much, sure, one, I don't think, but one person bid it last time. And then I actually thought Jackson, Alacray, they fell apart, but they looked at all that back, so it was like, oh.
Guys, ain't no contractor, if you run down, pick up one pipe, you can't even bill them, bring them in individually. Ain't nobody did that.
Well, if you, you, your, your fault we can do, if you wanna, well, if you look, if you look at his prices, I guess, delivering them to us. Like a six inch is one, one fifty-five. A eight inch is two twenty. You know, he's, he's hiring every pipe that way.
Oh, if you made a truck and one pipe. I mean, you can't buy like, one from one contractor, another from another.
You don't need, need trucks on the road.
You can buy out somebody's alvea, but that's the reason we split the, right? One, one, at least you better do one handle.
I think, I think we would need to, I think the right thing to do is give it to a bidder, and if he didn't have it in thought, then, that's how we want to do it, but I don't even know if JK is talking about it, but he may, you know. I mean, when you, when you look at the cost of savings, uh, Brethick Building is way cheaper. And again, I don't know if he'd be willing to talk that, because that, that order is, um. Are y'all ready? Maybe I should give him a read.
We have to look at them.
Yeah. But I'm just wondering if they know.
Well, you know, I mean, you've already opened teams up, I don't know what his price is.
Yeah, I mean, that's gonna be, be a dollar cheaper, I think.
Do it the bulk, probably let your mother do the bid at the bulk, I don't know.
Like you said, I don't know, I don't know.
Give a dollar to him, I don't care.
Here's one I do, I'd like to say, if you look at individual, uh, Jameson, or Dustin, whatever, Dustin, some are, usually priced cheaper doing that way, but if he has a lever, I mean, it's way higher, and if you look at ten to there, and it was thirty-five dollars per pipe additional, and I mean, just like from eighty-five to one fifty-five, or fifty-five to sixteen, or seventy-one dollars.
That's a bulk price.
No, no charge on bulk pricing, no, uh.
As I do with a bulk price, I ship.
Well, this, this is a, the two different, A D S will interchange with, with the other company. Well, I'm sitting down here with some pipes that you guys wanted, that you wanted, that I ordered a truckload, until I get rid of that, I can't stop it. And on top of that, can't get paid.
Yeah, or you could get this price, but what you got in stock, what you say?
This is a different company I'm, I'm dealing with for that price. A D S, if you notice, mine and Jackson, Alacray's price are pretty close. That's A D S pipe, that's the difference in the pipe.
So, you do A D S and let down?
Six hours away. The reason we've done A D S here in last little bit where you had an emergency, I could jump truck, trailer, and run the legs and pick it up. It's the other company's six hours away. So, you have to order at bulk to have it here.
And two, they made it extremely short, you're doing to the tornado, west of Kentucky, and then all these floods, uh, everywhere, that's why it was impossible to get. Y'all gonna think about it, come back to it at ten to meeting, or we didn't make a motion? Again, like I say, it's not really gonna be fair, because we're holding them in the mouth.
Yeah, that's a lot of hard places. Not fair one way or the other.
Make a motion, get to Brethick, glad you were looking at it, it's very cheap as well. Okay, we hopefully made a motion, go ahead and hold Brethick. Can do it in bulk, bulk pricing. And then second.
So, all the files we get, farm supply, then a big bulk price.
Boy, I know we're bulk.
Uh, not, not drop down, if we wasn't buying what he's got in stock, it wouldn't be, it's a difference. Right to him, then we have, then we're gonna obtain it right?
Yeah, what I've got down there, you know, is what some, plus, what's one, is one need in the future, so.
If we put order together like right now, we'd have to do a ten thousand, folks attend that whole order to get the price.
Depending on size to get a full truckload, it may be less than ten, it may be, I think, beyond.
I guess my question would be, actually, if we order bulk, and then for some reason we need a bunch of twenty-four inch pipe, we use them all up. But we need just twenty-four inch pipe at that point, if we have a bit of supply of anything else. What price, you gotta be into price, whether that be bulk price, or we can, if we order twenty fours.
At, at this point, it's what we're at right now. Until I move what, what's on lock, where I can start banging with this, with other pipes.
Now, each day and after, if we go with your price on this bulk price, we buy, we buy, we buy a truckload. Then all of a sudden, we need fifteen, twenty-four inch pipe, and you don't, that one, not part of the bulk load. Would we have to pay the other price different, would we, would you be able to go get part of the charge for thirteen?
Once I, once I move what's third, I'm gonna go back to start with this pipe here, that, that's up at the bulk price on.
Okay.
So, I'll have to.
So, whatever the bulk price is, after you clean the lot off, we, we'll get that every.
Well, what we do, like this, if Tim blocked it on, on the bulk price, then we go to Tim. And if, if JK has got the individual pipe, Tim, I got the pipe, and I'll own JK, for cheap price.
But, but, I mean, that's what we're gonna do anyway. But what he's saying, what he's saying, that could be.
If you got a pipe on the yard, at the bulk price, then we'll, if we did, you got to pick the pipe, we'll get the bulk price, right?
Once I move what's down there, right?
Right, but if we got an individual pipe, that you ain't got, then we can go to the other supplier, you know, and get a better price, because you ain't got the pipe. See what I'm saying?
What he's saying, though, when he cleaned his lot out, he'll have, he'll have nothing but what we were talking about, the bulk price.
Why don't we do it that way, just go with?
Yeah, but with the other changes, like, we have a big project on, we have to have, and we go clean Tim out, twenty-four inch pipe.
A lot of Tim's got the pipe in the bulk, we, we can buy a pipe off Tim at bulk price, what I'm saying. But if Tim don't, then we can go to JK or whoever, for a better price, is that, is that okay with you, Tim?
Yeah, got it.
Okay, so, motion's been made to go ahead and award it to Brethick Building, hopefully. So, once your pipe is gone, if, if we was to get in an emergency and need some other pipe, we can go to the other pipe.
I don't know how you need to word that, but I'm giving a motion. Tim, I have a contention on Brethick's gun stock.
There you are, that's how, that's how we do. Nine intention, uh, Brethick's got it. So, do we have a second on that?
Second.
I forget who's talking. Elche, uh, Donny Bush?
Uh.
Roy Elke?
Uh.
Ray Moore?
Uh.
All right, so Brethick, we have, we have, then. Here, the next one is...
Piston.
Piston Troll. And it is from Bluegrass, Piston Troll, in London, Haver, Kentucky. Your judiciary center is a hundred dollars a month. Courthouse is a hundred dollars a month. Senior citizens is a hundred dollars a month. Brethick County Garage is fifty dollars per month. And for a total of a year, look forward, it'll be forty-two twenty. Is Bluegrass the one who bought out that Piston Troll? The, the, who we got right now?
East Kentucky. So, yeah, so...
How, how much are those, so they didn't, they didn't put a bid in? Have you got a bid there?
It's in the bank, it's in the bank, it's kind of, actually, we use, always before. Yeah, we get the pass until that.
Yeah, he saw his bids out, and the company just come in here, and there, they started charging more than that, then run off the bat. So the other bunch, I already named them, two or three times. And I call them, they're a lot cheaper, but I can't remember.
East Kentucky's, they're, they're ten dollars cheaper on the courthouse ones. But they definitely did.
I wonder if they, no, did you contact them?
I didn't contact anybody, and it was, it was, I didn't know.
East Kentucky? I'll tell you, give you the number, I'll be near Sonny. Sonny, if you support someone, been paid, uh, he, he has a lot.
Fellas, they plenty of them.
So he was just ninety dollars cheaper on the courthouse?
Ten dollars cheaper for him, and they're senior citizens, there's...
There's a lot.
I don't see any other charges, I see the ninety ones for the courthouse.
The ninety for judiciary, ninety for senior?
Ninety for those, yeah.
Again, we go to your group, then, what's further, contact them, or?
I don't know, it's, it's, uh...
We only got one bid, just, we just go to one bid.
So that's it, too.
Except each of them.
So we have a motion to go ahead and order a bid to Bluegrass, Piston Troll, then?
Oh, oh, check.
Okay, do you make a motion? Donny Bush?
Uh.
Roy Elke?
Uh.
Elche?
Shouldn't he speak in the background?
Huh?
Shouldn't he speak in the background?
Okay, on water treatment, the only one that's gonna be in, that's Kim Surge. And... See the amount? Yeah. A monthly fee of two hundred twenty-nine dollars from a, we have a motion to go ahead and order wastewater treatment program, and I think it's two. Had it here since I've been in, off the order. Roy Elke?
Uh.
Ray Moore?
Uh.
Elche?
Uh.
Sonny Bush?
Uh.
And true on that? And judiciary center, PM? Kim Surge, people to order treatment, on this one here, is for, uh, PM, on judiciary, PM, the, uh, bid and payment.
Eight, 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 eight.
Tim. Uh, flat monthly fee from Comfort System USA is eleven hundred and forty-one dollars per month. This other one is H M C. Let's see, H M C, for a year, is fourteen thousand, eight hundred dollars. Four, seven, four, eight, four, one.
That's monthly, huh?
Yeah, half time, eight, twelve.
Thirteen sixty-nine.
Okay, Comfort System being thirteen thousand, six hundred ninety-six.
Eighteen.
Fourteen hundred ninety-two.
Thirteen sixty-nine. The only time he's done it.
Let's see what we got, well.
I'd be afraid, I'd be afraid of it.
So you just wanna re-bid those ones and come to the end of this, or come back? Those we had before, uh, who bid before? Well, here's a gravel and asphalt.
But they're actually gonna be with, ready tomorrow, our bill ain't been paid.
They're gonna look out there something. But, um, shop supplies usually do a split between that, but, um...
On the park? I'd kinda say just the ones that we talked about.
Usually we watch it. Um, just as long as, uh, usually it's been...
Been during, we've been, been, been came, we've been came a little bit over there.
So we don't...
Nobody's ever bid against, uh, on the gravel, I guess we're doing a lock-in price on them.
Yeah, so I'll, I'll, just, on gravel, lumber, asphalt, bridge, um, shop supplies, potential supplies, we will bid again outside of today, and then I'll copy.
Is that okay?
So we next meet before we have a good set of...
We meet, we meet, are we still gonna be bidding twenty-one night every now, or we got three, three every now?
Maybe, maybe, maybe.
Do, do you think most of you?
Well, we'll do the next one, I mean, I just went to these for that time.
I think I can see that.
Okay. It's over the next month, maybe.
Yeah, okay, I get it. All right, on the, on the gravel and lumber and a few more things here, he just wanna re-advertise the paper and we'll do his next one maybe, from reading him again a lot. Okay. The one that we've got here, y'all wanna go ahead and speak now, if y'all wanna hang around the rest of the day? I know David, he could come down and say the rest of the meeting, but you wanna go ahead and David and get the grant number, or you wanna hurry?
Oh, well, I can stay at home meeting, or I can go around there, where you want me to do it.
Okay, how about you, Karen and Irvin? Do y'all wanna go ahead and, um, make your...
The only thing I'm gonna say is, uh, we need, the county needs some pictometry. That's a mapping process. And, uh, every activity in the county will benefit from it, and everybody will be on the same sheet of paper. It's a digitized mapping process, it'll make magistrate's jobs easier, it'll make the road departments' jobs easier. It'll help in the PBA office, it helps with law enforcement, with, uh, fire service, ambulance service and so forth. Every activity in the county would benefit from it.
So just a more advanced form of mapping?
Pardon?
Does that more detailed form of mapping?
It's very...
Does either one of our ambulance service do that now?
No, nobody does.
I know Bray County doesn't, what, what, I'll give you an example.
Many counties have it.
Yeah. If you go from your home and meet nine-one-one service or ambulance?
Right.
It actually all, it logs onto your home.
Absolutely.
And it'll take you straight to your home and show you a picture of the home that you're looking for, if you got five houses tied together, this one here's one called?
Yes.
You'll know which, I mean, and, you know, that, and one second may be different than saving a life.
Right.
And, uh, the same with sheriffs, and then even the county, uh, I know Knox County's got it, I do know Bray County's got it, I'm not sure about Wolf County, but they've had it for quite some time.
Yeah, a lot of the counties over in the western part of the state.
Do you, do you know what the pricing is on that?
It'll be, we understand about seventy-eight thousand dollars. But, you know, it's not for us, it's for everybody.
And, and are there any grants out there, did you, oh, you called me when you lacked in training and told me about that?
Yes.
Are there any grants available that you know of, maybe there's something, do you know of anything, David and Craig, that has, uh...
I don't.
I definitely think like Homeland Security, whenever it comes around, next year, perfect for...
Abs- absolutely, everything. So that did good in the county, and everybody's on the same sheet of paper.
So, so would you all like to make a motion to go ahead and look into funding for this, uh, uh, project?
Craig had to do it.
Well, you'll get, I mean, if Craig can do it, I mean, it may be more granted, but I think we need to look in, go into it, look into it, because I guess Homeland Security grants are just closing up, like the day of tomorrow, I think, I think it was this week.
Well, it is actually May thirty-first with the...
Okay, that's what I said, yeah, that's, that's due day. I know it's too, too late for this time of year, but I mean, we're gonna be looking at it, getting the pricing together, and checking and seeing what it will... And maybe some matching grants that would be to cover that, here they are, Mr. Guy, you should know.
Uh, does Hazer, Niner, or whatever, they already have that, that's what this package is?
I don't know about Hazer nine-one-one, I don't, Bray County, its physical court does.
I would assume they do.
I think Bray County does their own nine-one-one now, don't they?
When, when the county gets it, every, every activity.
You're talking about Post, ain't you?
Yeah.
You're asking about Post?
Yeah.
Is Bray, is Bray County still partnered with?
No.
I just read that, no. I think they got their own nine-one-one, then Lake County.
Um, Wolf County has enhanced nine-one-ones, it sounds like what he's talking about, I think that's a big advantage technology stuff.
Well, I'm not kidding, if you get the grant, you get the package that PBA office can install, let the sheriff office can use it to...
Yeah, we, we, we get thumbed out, we put the address in our cell phones, and the father phone.
And you hope it's good?
And we hope, and we got map looks in.
But now, if he's talking about it, take you directly, and I mean, and show you the picture?
I know, but I just, I just wondered if maybe, uh, Post had that, I don't know.
You could even get on the side of the road, you look up to a bridge, you look at a bridge, see where the bridge is at, see what kind of damage you got.
They tell us, they tell us sometimes what kinda house we're looking for, so they, they probably have, I don't know, that's just, they, they do our nine-one-one dispatching.
Okay.
So, but some of the ARPA homes qualify as...
Those was gonna ask you.
Good, so...
Hmm, there are two less groups running out to water in IT right now.
They'd be worth a shot, just ask them.
Again, you could ask them. And maybe, we may be able to get a matching direct, you, you part of that, under another fund toward it. Because we could have been ordered out of our, our fiscal year budget, uh, if we don't get a grant, we're dating on the top of it.
It will definitely be the benefit of every activity in the county.
Okay, so, uh, if you're motion, uh, go ahead and look at funding available for this service, you wanna make a motion?
Motion, I get it.
Okay, you're free, does Raymond make the motion?
Yes. What was this, this is the action?
You know, I think she thought it'd be big, the ambulance department, which would put in with the honey festival, we're gonna get them eggs. Or we could go ahead and make a note, I guess, let's go ahead and make it, number one. Okay, Raymond, make the, make the name. Uh, Donny Bush, Roy Elton, Ray Moore, Elton, motion Karen. Okay, the next one is Honey Festival, Karen. You know, I'll, uh, share the records of the week that y'all live in, and...
Thank you for adding to the agenda, um, in years past, uh, Breath County Fiscal Court has supported the honey festival, and, uh, we provide this, it's not the Jackson Honey Festival, it is the Breath County Honey Festival, and it takes everybody working together to do what we've been able to do, like everyone else's prices of things have risen for us. Uh, the price of the tent that we usually get for crafting, um, we were gonna have to pay about three or four thousand dollars more this year just for that tent. So, we've tried to cut back in costs, we're going with the two-hundred-foot tent this year instead of, uh, what we usually do with the three-hundred. Uh, we have raised vendor fees, uh, a little bit to try to recoup some of that money also. And I know that you don't have money, I heard in the budget, for anything like this, this upcoming year, but we have asked, um, typically we've given this five hu- five thousand dollars, and this year we've asked for seven hundred and fifty thousand just because of the price of everything going up. A couple of other things though that we've asked, uh, last year, you allowed us to use the basement of the courthouse that works really well for like a green room, or a hospitality room for the, for the, uh, bands and the acts that were going on stage and right behind the courthouse. That will still be set up the same things, the same way, so, uh, we'll need to utilize the grounds around the courthouse, you know, for the music. Um, we also would like to ask if there's any way possible that we could have the use of the county parking lot beside the old Scooby-Doo building for, uh, the vendors' parking and for, um, the parking for the workers in the food booths, which will be back at the extension office again. Uh, we've run into problems, there are people trying to, having to park, you know, way down over the hill, or, you know, quite a ways away from the tent, and we've never had any consistent parking for the workers that, in the food booths, which would be right across the street. So, um, we do, uh, t-shirt sales, booth rentals, uh, we have fees that we charge for the pageant, for the honey walk and run, so we try to use the money as, um, try to be as careful with the use of funds as we can, and we do want to provide these things free of charge to the people, there's no charge for the concerts. Uh, we would like to be able to provide inflables and things for the kids again, and allow that to be free of charge. Um, so the only thing that they have to pay for is their food, and if they decide to play the carnival games and things, that some of the trucks come in, and that's really the only expense to families that come in to enjoy the honey festival. So anything that you all could do, uh, we appreciate it, and also if anybody wants to do any in-kind work, uh, James Turner has agreed to come and sit at the tent and do a man the t-shirt booth on Saturday morning, which will free us up to do some other things. One thing, if you have any ideas, we desperately need help at the beginning of each day and at the end of the night to put up the, to roll up the tents and put the, put the sides back down. Uh, so if there's any, anybody in, associated with the county that would love to come and do that first thing in the morning with us, because, um, last year it was, uh, me and Laura and whoever happened to come by on the street that were trying to get that up and down, so any contribution like that, we would accept all in-kind donation work would be beneficial also. So, thank you all.
I know, I don't know, how much funding does the, the city usually contribute toward, uh, the honey festival, do you know?
The city, what, what they do, they don't give a monetary amount, but they do garbage pickup every night. They do, uh, they provide workers to set up, help with the setup of the tent, uh, and that's overtime work for them to, um, because they do, you know, Wednesday, and it has to be, everything is taken back down on Sunday night. So, uh, there's no actual, but we do get money from the tourism board, that, that is from the, from the tourism tax.
I know, I think in the past, we normally, I'm not wrong, we usually get early start, I think we split five thousand, but last year I think we gave y'all five thousand.
Yeah.
For what y'all did have here prior to...
I felt, I should be in five thousand. Maybe we're getting there, it's very five thousand.
And it won't be no, it won't be no trouble at all, you, the courthouse for, for green room, and like we did last time, we go up, we can kind of park on there too, through the fence, if we can rope it off, and you just put the same additional work and all, but...
You could really jump over that part a lot, that surplus office.
What now?
You get a lot of them jumping vehicles, or in a park lot, if you have a, a truck plus office or something, spin over, go by there, clear, rip over.
Yeah, I think normally, I think normally...
If we, if we had that parking lot cleared where it could be used, they could, they would take care of our vendors and our workers in the food booths, they would greatly, greatly appreciate having a place to park.
They wouldn't do that, you know, pretty much office, you know, and jump together and stuff.
And they have that, we have that, it's, it's, it's...
We don't, that's what I'm saying, yeah, we do, uh...
I'll just say this, guys, during the raging turmoil, like, that, that equipment down there is really dangerous to be walking in there. I usually park on top of the hill, that, that, to be good effect, block, big like that.
Yeah, I think in previous administrations, I think they've had to fill that just, uh, just to get out, to, we haven't had, we haven't been that efficient, so that's, that's a good thing, yes. So, uh, getting back to what we're talking about here on this, uh, a few years ago, we had some parking lot that come through, but, uh, as far as donation, uh, I know there is, we said five, we did do five thousand to Erle Fair, the festival this year.
Two months ago, yeah.
Yeah. But I do know y'all have budgeted zero dollars for it, and it will be on, it will come out next year's budget.
I can make it happen now, if we do about to do it, pay it and put a budget transfer, just for that much money, I can find it, we have... I would manage my schedule, first have a minute later, I would make sure we have enough, we did.
What did you come up with, with, uh, bill from Eagles, up four hundred and ninety-nine thousand, you ever come up with that yet?
Have to.
You come, you come back on later?
I had to, yeah, I just wanted, we just got issued, uh, we didn't have enough, just we didn't get them now, like today, or whatever, before the year runs out, I can transfer it. But when we do a motion?
Seventy-five.
You wanna do seventy-five, yeah? You just have to make a motion to pay them and a budget transfer to, with the seventy-five, I can put that line out, because that line out is zero.
I'll make the motion.
Second.
To do seventy-five hundred?
Do you save the five hundred in a budget?
Yeah, transfer it, but that line gets a general waiver right now. The codes? It'll go into the zero.
Probably, probably gonna want that to pay for that, that jumps in there.
Probably. He's moved, yeah, so...
Okay, just wanna, wanna play a motion, do a nominee, but, uh...
Yeah, just about, I got the line on these though. I'll have to, we said that.
We can leave it true, because you want to...
We'll take twenty-five hundred from zero one, five zero eight one, five seven eight.
Twenty-five hundred?
Yeah, twenty-five hundred. And five thousand from zero one, nine one zero zero, three oh seven. And we'll be adding seventy-five hundred to zero one, five three three zero, five oh seven. Okay.
Okay. We taking twenty-five hundred out of zero one, five zero eight one, five seven eight, five thousand out of zero one, dash nine one zero zero, three oh seven, and putting it in account, zero one, dash five three three, zero five zero zero.
Yes.
Okay. Hope we made a motion, Donny Bush made a second, pay more?
Aye.
Ellis Cantor? Donny Bush?
Aye.
Will, uh, motion Karen.
Thank you all so much, and I promise this will be used for the kids, I'll contact some people today to, uh, do inflables and things like that, and we'll make sure that everybody knows that, uh, you pay all of support this, thank you all.
And you're gonna make, you know, I appreciate all you do for the county, it's not just you, it's how many you do so much for, since you, I know you don't even get a thank you for, from, but, uh, for, but... I appreciate everything you do for the county, and, and... All right, uh, David Baker, Craig, you wanna go ahead or not?
I just wanna start off by introducing myself, I'm David Baker, I'm a camper in the riverland. I've had a few of you all, uh, but, uh, what I wanna go over today is really some projects we've been working on for y'all. The Southport FVU campground, that's, they're right now is working on the design for it, for it, and they're about to bid in about thirty days. And the same with the visitor's center, they're just working on, working on that design, and it will bid, bid in about sixty to ninety days. The, uh, Southport FVU feasibility study and the, uh, Southport FVU master plan. For those two plans, which are future phases, we need additional land by November, or we'll lose the funding. And so Jennifer wanted me to bring that up to you guys and let you on on that. But the, the current phases right now that's going on, the campground and the visitor's center, those are, okay, it's just for these two future phases.
How much did you talk?
Um, she didn't specify, but I can email her later, talk to her.
Or the next thing, like twenty acre, but...
I'm looking, we're about sixty, seventy acres, we're all, uh, looking for a pitch.
I'm looking, I'm looking right now, a couple, well, go ahead and do what you're doing, you're talking.
The, uh, the next project I'm gonna talk about, we need the resolution signed and passed, which I believe the judge has, but it's for the Breath County courthouse renovations. It's a, it's for a CDVG grant, and it will renovate the courthouse to be ADA accessible. It will install a new elevator, construct a permanent ADA grant, and renovate the bathrooms to make them handicap accessible. But, would you like me to read the resolution, or how would you like that?
I thank you, everybody, you gotta, you gotta come.
But, uh, other than the resolution, that's all I have.
Thank you, Dave.
Thank you.
So at this time, if you all have, look at the regulations, take time to read order, I think, and this is just, uh, for the lock ramp or CDVG grant, or... First they said they'd take care of the elevator, but they actually wanted more projects, so we're gonna make the courthouse handicap accessible, bathroom, all three floors, and actually, instead of the ramp we got outside, it'd actually be a permanent ramp, and all be included in this grant, uh, to be able, and they'll take care of all, all of it. So, take a motion, go ahead and consider, uh, passing this resolution?
What is your number, quickly? What is your number, please, 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 uh, two zero two two, zero six... Two eight, dash zero two. Uh, it's pretty much like two zero two two, zero six, two eight, dash zero two. We already have another resolution on the agenda, that we named the original.
So the reverse A?
Yeah. And this one be zero two, and then I've actually got another one, I gotta...
Two two, zero six, two eight, dash zero two.
Also, this, this, the grants is up to seven hundred percent of all.
Yeah, that's it. I'll make the motion.
Okay, you have a second?
Second.
Donny second that? Ray Moore?
Aye.
Ellis Cantor?
Aye.
Donny Bush?
Aye.
Will?
Aye.
Okay, I'll get you signed, what do you, David? Okay, next is go ahead and jump back up to, who are we next, Thorne over again?
For the...
Same, one, give consideration approval to pay your annual quarterly dues, uh, support the PBA and senior citizens for, uh, the first, I guess, first quarter.
What's the amount?
Five thousand, one hundred and ten dollars for the PBA, seventy-five hundred for senior citizens. PBA's went up by five, six hundred dollars from last year, the best year's four minutes, something, this year's five thousand, so...
You have a motion?
Motion.
Have a second?
Sure.
Ellis Cantor?
Aye.
Donny Bush?
Aye.
Will?
Aye.
Ray Moore?
Aye.
Motion Karen. Consideration approval of payment annual training incentive to Matthew Hudson in the form of two thousand, three hundred and thirty-nine hundred and fifty-four tent. Uh, I know I went to Matthew and told him I hadn't got a letter, but I guess he don't get a letter, or he traded her, but, I know you got your first thing, but...
I put it in a packet, I was making work for my meetings I went to.
Yeah.
So...
So he's got his forty yards training in.
I've actually had it in a while, but I'm back on vacation, so, I can have it now.
Should I second? Who seconded this?
Second.
Donny Bush?
Aye.
Roy Elton?
Aye.
Ray Moore?
Aye.
Ellis Cantor?
Aye.
Consideration approval of the resolution twenty twenty-six, twenty-eight, for twenty twenty-two MAC, per permission agreement, we have a motion.
Motion.
Second?
Second.
Roy Elton?
Aye.
Ray Moore?
Aye.
Ellis Cantor?
Aye.
Donny Bush?
Aye.
Okay, consideration and approval of the resolution of Breath County Board of Health Establishing Public Health Tax Rate for twenty twenty-two.
Guys.
You have a motion?
Motion.
Have a second?
Second.
Roy Elton?
Aye.
Ray Moore?
Aye.
Ellis Cantor?
Aye.
Donny Bush?
Aye.
Okay, the next thing on here is, um, I know we had some discussion about Watts County Volunteer Fire Department, but as of today, their ambulance service is no longer, uh, in effect. They did take one vehicle, they had a twenty-twenty-one Tahoe that they took off the insurance policy for the fire department and, and added to the fire department, but they've got three ambulances. Uh, they were asking, can we leave them, and the policy starts actually June the fourth? They're wanting to know if we can keep insurance on them till they surplus them out.
Should we get the set? Should we get the back?
How much says? The pay over, that's how it's out of the amount for back time, each agreement.
Thirty-five thousand five hundred.
How much?
Thirty-five.
Thirty-five thousand.
I said he actually owed them that, but what about, what about the money that, that they owe the fiscal court?
That's what they owe fiscal court on insurance?
Yeah.
Thirty-five thousand five hundred.
Were you asking us to keep paying insurance on them? Were you, were you asking?
They're asking us to keep the insurance on their ambulances until they surplus them out. Here, here's what I would recommend, uh, if we're gonna keep insurance on them till they sell them, uh, once upon the, once upon sale, to go ahead and reimburse us back for our insurance premium through the ambulance service and the insurance that it costs to keep on the ambulance.
Does the county pay your insurance bridge, Mr. Collins, Breathwood Ambulance?
No, it can't.
Can't?
No, he's in business that was nonprofit.
So we're gonna pay it, how we wanna pay the, the insurance?
For two years, how long, if they have that to ambulance service for two years, not if you close, so I'd say.
My question is, have we?
Three years in November, I'd like to say.
Three in November?
I would like, have we, maybe we've lost, I've really lost, if they're out of business, we've lost the money.
You, you didn't hear what I'm just saying?
Yeah, what we're talking about is getting this brand into the contract with them to keep it on for now. In terms, we can get our money back when they sell the ambulance.
Right. Plus the, plus the whatever, to keep insurance on them.
Why do you turn to, you need none of them, I mean, all you need is the vehicle itself.
Yeah, that, that would be it. It won't be a...
I think.
She said it wouldn't be a lot, but she said we would have to approve it before we, on the policy.
Yours, yours, uh...
It won't be no liability, it'll just be covered on the vehicle.
Sure is, uh, the way it used to be. I checked on K V regulations recently. But I don't think that ambulance is still sit there, but on ambulance service.
I don't think they was there this morning when I come down. They were there yesterday, but I didn't...
What I'm thinking to do, what he's suggesting, either from a grid, I, I, or a lot of concern. Think they have paid their own insurance out of one certain, I, I don't, you know, he can get his whole lot of...
I think, I think middle of that. Um, if you could, if you could get the money, that's what I'm thinking, the seller. That's the question, how much more money you gonna be out?
I think it'll be the, the insurance.
How much, how much do the, how much do the elk count?
Thirty, thirty-five, uh, they have paid the two thousand dollars if we've had insurance on it from right now.
If I had the opportunity to look at the ambulances, I could lay you, pay the county their debt back for the ambulances. I don't know, I don't, I ain't looked at them on what they got.
They got two brand new, I mean, they got one brand new.
Which would benefit us and benefit the county getting their money back.
I think that's what you're... I'm not even, I haven't talked to Tim.
I'm not even talking to my boss about that remaining, or I've said that might be a way, that you can do it if we get a good deal on some ambulance, and make it, and pretty much you all get some money back.
But I think at this time, whatever we do, Brandon needs to draw a contract that whenever they, they surplus out a few versus that for four million, I think that's what the reason is up front.
So do, could you confiscate the ambulances for the money they owe and sell us ambulances?
I, I don't, I think they're not their ambulances.
We could file a legal action.
I'm just going, I'm just going, I have no idea, this office is not legal.
Well, plus the, it's legally, if you're gonna, we can dispatch them.
But if I had an opportunity to, you could, you could agree with that.
That, that's something you probably need to talk to them about, but this time I'll consider a motion, uh, to go, to check, well, will you give them that motion to check in to keep insurance on them till they sell, or?
Motion to pay the insurance on Watts County's ambulance service contingent upon the agreement to pass our debts upon sale of their vehicles.
For their, for their property. For their loan, yeah.
Can you bring it to the court?
Yeah, bring it down. Okay, Ray Moore made that motion? You have a second?
Second.
Donnie Bush?
Uh.
Roy Elke?
Uh.
Ray Moore?
Uh.
Ellis Changer?
Uh.
Okay, Ray Moore's for...
Did we do anything, did we do, did we do anything on the nine one one, Chris Collins, you'll be, because you's all in ambulance service now?
We're the only ambulance service in the county, you all might have to do nine one one, I guess.
We probably need to vote on that for Breath, it wants to be the primary. Because before we had a split.
That's a primary.
They are, they are.
It ain't no problem to vote on that, that's no...
But before we had a split between you two, so we probably need to vote on that, don't worry. With there no, there no such thing as Watts, uh, County Department.
Uh, Ray Moore.
Uh.
Ellis Changer.
Uh.
Donnie Bush.
Uh.
Roy Elphie. I don't know also, but you all got the numbers. Didn't have them a few weeks ago, but you have them now. Uh. Consideration Arthur, what you got, Mount Arthur now?
There's possible acts concerning Arthur funding. As the judge has already said several times in his meeting, that he was so concerned about senior citizens.
Yes, sir, I am.
And also the, uh, also the clerk's office was so concerned that they put up social media that.
Okay, hold on one minute. Hold on one minute, we're talking about Arthur, I'm not gonna sit here like two banks.
Arthur, we'll talk about Arthur, use that to finish, please.
No, you're talking about the clerk's office and the judges and.
I'm just getting there, please, if you make my point.
Make your motion and go on.
Okay. With this being said, I make a motion to give the senior citizen fifty thousand per year for the next four years out of the Arthur money.
Donnie, you know you can do that.
Yes, I can, yes, we can, if you read the stipulations.
Only, only two things you can do right now with it is, uh.
So, so you're not, you're not for giving the, giving the fifty thousand dollars, you for it a while ago, but now you're not.
I'd give them all of them. I'd, I'd make a motion to give you all of them, you wanna make sure?
Yeah.
I think we're gonna do that anyway, but you can.
Fifty thousand dollars per year for the next four years.
Only thing you can use Arthur for right now is water line and IT. You can't get the senior to deal with that, why don't you sit there and say that?
Judge, you're wrong.
No, I'm not wrong. This is federal money that has to be used around now, but the only two things you can use on is water lines and internet service.
We can, we can still present it.
That's right.
Let's do, let's do more than that, let's go ahead and give him, uh, give him a million. Over the next four years.
I've got some more product here if we need to address.
No, I, I, that's, that's one at a time here, let's go ahead and give the senior the million dollars over the next four years.
Your friend will guarantee it if you get there.
No, if it's good for ten dollars, it'd be good for a million dollars.
You have to deal with just about what you is a million dollars.
Now, where, where are you going through and that's you can get Arthur money to say it?
Nonprofits, that's the only thing that we could even try to play into would be, uh, some of these counties have been giving stuff like charities and nonprofits. So, it'd be the only way you could actually try to be in.
Let's go ahead and give him a million then.
Can we justify?
I'll justify it.
You just talked about.
We need a building and I've already got it rented in France yes, and we've been a new senior citizen building.
I'm gonna speak up to Johnson.
Huh?
You think that's a motion or what?
Give him a million dollars.
Fifty thousand dollars for the next four years, allocate out of Arthur money, second motion.
Twelve thousand five hundred, oh, you like it?
Fifty thousand per year, Jim, per year. Second that, yeah.
Okay, motion's been made to give singers, uh, two hundred thousand dollars over the next four years. Donnie made a motion and Ellis is second. Uh, Roy Elphie?
Uh.
Ray Moore?
Uh.
Ellis Changer?
Uh.
Donnie Bush?
Uh.
At this time, I'd like to go ahead and, uh, consider a motion to approve, uh, give them, uh, two hundred thousand dollars per year the next, or two hundred fifty thousand dollars the next year. For the year, build a new singer, build a new singer.
Motion.
We have a second. I'm gonna second that motion. Ray Moore?
Uh.
Ellis Changer?
I don't care.
Donnie Bush? Donnie Bush?
I didn't hear you Ellis.
Uh.
Uh. Uh.
Two hundred fifty thousand per year the next four years. Roy Elphie?
Uh.
Uh. Okay, consideration approved with the.
Ain't that Arthur money yet? It's okay.
Do you want to add?
Ain't that Arthur money yet? If you give up, I would just give this bit, a bit more away.
But last question now before you go any further with the two motions, is that a total of three or three years?
We're gonna do it separately.
Yeah, that's, that's about, and that's Mark, Mark the money how we got for first round, one million, two million.
One, one ten, you should get another one point two here.
That's one remaining, well, you're offering two fifty, but the water is already.
Yeah, it's different.
Uh.
Yours plus theirs come to you. What did you get?
I don't know about that, we just got one point two.
One point two, so, so we're up to two fifty one million.
One point two and three fifty, fif- one point five, five.
Well, the two fifty, three fifty, uh, two fifty, three fifty.
It's two fifty, but we have, we have a private top side.
Okay.
And they gonna have to be no money for all of them.
We have another kind of money. Yeah, where we gonna build that big building at, yeah?
Uh, I think we'll try to build inside the industrial building over there, turn that into a court place, rich and.
Can we do that Arthur money too?
I think if you all send nonprofits, I mean, we're nonprofit enough, so we can.
Let's see if we can do this.
Well, it's gone.
Please water, please water.
It's gone, we just had one point two, five, it's gone.
There's one, another one, one two coming up.
We can't, we can't finish, we ain't got it.
We will allocate it anyway.
No, we won't, let's go, let's go.
We got a water project, Cedar Bend, I mean Cedar Road in Bethany, Kentucky there, um, and.
Do you want to add?
We got a water line project, Cedar Road, Bethany. That's, uh, Bobby can probably elaborate on that. It costs two hundred eighty thousand dollars for the complete project. I make the motion to allocate the two hundred eighty thousand dollars out of Arthur money, money to finish the Cedar Road water line project.
For, for what road?
Cedar Road, Bethany.
Cedar Road and Bethany?
Cedar Road, Bethany, Kentucky, Rethick County.
Stand behind George Griffiths.
I second that motion.
Are there any more houses that pass George Griffiths down in there?
There's gonna be a bunch once.
Gonna be?
Yeah, oh yeah, they're, they're creating something in there, exactly.
Hey.
I'll be a rich man there, so, I mean, yeah, you can laugh.
They don't deserve it, Donnie. They ain't nothing no more important than their singers and their kids than me, buddy, you can sit there and smear everybody too.
I know what all the women think, uh, pretty little life for here, yeah.
Okay, it's gone, the next thing, money ain't out.
Well, we ain't done yet, I'm.
The money ain't out, the money has to.
Well, we got, well, we got a motion, a second on the floor, we gonna, we gonna put some water line there in Bethany.
I'm not doing anybody the motion, who second it?
I'll second it.
How much is it, that thing?
Two hundred eighty thousand dollar finished project.
Where, where's your paperwork to document all this stuff?
I've got it right here, I can, it's on the.
You got it, where?
I can send it to you, you know, I'm an engineer.
You get that?
Why, why don't y'all do this for a quarter million, something like this? Four, five, quarter million, I'm handing board, that's make a.
You get to put water out there in Bethany, is that what you say? You want, you got me on the agenda, that's why I'm.
I wanna, I wanna see this over here.
We got a motion, a second on the floor.
Okay, Roy Elphie?
Money's there, I'm playing back.
Uh, Ray Moore?
I'll go film that.
You made a second, only.
You change it every second.
Two, two hundred eighty thousand, how much is it, Donnie?
Two eighty thousand, we ain't done here. Uh.
Donnie Bush?
Uh.
Roy Elphie?
Uh.
Motion carried, I thought I also.
Uh, I got another.
You go ahead, I do.
Yes, sir.
Turn the Arthur money, Chris Andy Griffith with the Rethick County Museum, uh.
Museum?
Yes, nonprofit, I make a motion to give her a hundred fifty thousand dollars in Arthur money.
That is a joke.
Oh, a joke? I guess it's a joke, Jan, it's a joke.
Do you have a motion?
Make that motion.
Do you have a second? Do you have a second?
I second it. Give it out of the way.
Ellis Changer?
Uh.
Donnie Bush?
Uh.
Roy Elphie? Any more?
Uh.
I don't know, you, motion carried. Uh, next thing on the mission, consider approval of payment of credit card. Got a motion?
I have what? Where you put that? Did you know what?
I did.
That's number twelve, twenty-two.
What's the map?
Has a note set down. Uh, for my credit card. Total will be one thousand seventeen dollars forty-one cents. And that's for, uh, the office supply stuff and. Uh, some travel fees for the jailer when they went, picked up a prisoner, I got a receipt for all of them again. So, my total is one thousand seventy dollars. Forty-one cents. Jim's got a few more things that I could find my card for me, he lets us use his card for some training stuff, so. We are still missing a few receipts from his, but right now we can pay. Three thousand eight hundred dollars and five cents. Then we can put on our, uh, pawn receipts for the other five, the other ones, we can pay those too.
Okay. Motion pay credit card bill.
Second.
Roy Elphie? Ray Moore?
Uh.
Ellis Changer? Uh. Donnie Bush? Uh, next thing is, uh, to transfer seventy-five thousand dollars to General Engine Road without the kids.
Uh, it's making, yeah, just go talk to him. Um, alright, so what happened was, minimum, what happened was back in March, we got two grants, one for twenty-five thousand, one for fifty thousand from the Division of Solid Waste. Um. Yeah, I can't remember which one, which one we said, but she gives seventy-five thousand dollars, well, when it came in, I was positive in general, but then when we did all of our, the breeder was, well, the call off, what we used before, it came out on two, so to make that reconcile properly. I just moved from general back to road, so it came out the same camp. So, we can give that, give that account, but the transfer one L dash zero zero two.
Okay, you make a motion? Second. I'll second that motion. Ray Moore?
Uh.
Ellis Changer?
Uh.
Donnie Bush?
Uh.
Roy Elphie? Okay. Consideration approval, nine one one.
I have no, oh, you just said nine one one five?
Uh.
Nine one one five, I got none too. I had no, you said nine one one five.
Okay, what do you want?
The.
Okay, you got any more, you have it? Okay, you wanna go elaborate on that? I don't know if it's way negative on phone on the nine one one.
Oh. I don't much bad, um, we are getting phone calls this morning, but I don't think they put one back there in that office, they put one in Kevin's office and one up front, back here. They actually, when we were switching off, they did, yeah, we'll do that tomorrow, but, um, they put the phone line at the front, one from the left, one in the back, and the fax on the front. But, um, since then, we've not had one over there that's worked properly, you know, been in and out, thought the charge office lived for. But, um, because Crystal used her cell phone for her primary line, so everybody calls, six five seven seven, cell phone, that's everybody's. But, um, her phone is actually out right now, so we were proposing there, um. To purchase a new cell phone for the county, they put it as a nine one four, using that same number, I guess Crystal was getting the phone up though.
No, I'll take my six five seven seven, but I need to get one for the county use, I'm part of using my personal.
Primary name, get a cell phone?
Yeah, that's what I've been using, my personal cell, I've not had an office phone.
But they're putting it in as would be?
They're supposed to, I don't know, they've been over there, they have called me back here.
So, that's what they have, phone in. After that. After.
They just trying what you done to the budget, I don't see, you don't attempt buying a cell phone and capital for county by now.
Guess you don't get one.
What are you gonna do for the residents to call me and address?
Uh, well, they get phone in the night.
They're putting one in the front and one in Kevin's office, not in my office.
They got one up front and then one in the back.
Oh, we need one up front or who's in there?
They have a lot of space where, uh, I let, stay up front, let it everywhere.
That's what the seventy-five work said.
I didn't get to go over there, since we have.
You just need to get up and come back to her, we don't want to. Yeah, lounge, we don't want to. Okay, next thing on the agenda is, uh, uh. Bill, I, I just wrote Bill six time pay.
Yeah, um, he called me and requested his six time being paid out.
Twenty, twenty? Twenty?
Yeah, twenty days is just back to.
That's all, that's all, that's all made, that's in revenue.
Yeah, so, I don't know, I said, I've not looked it up yet on revenue, I think, we gotta give it to twenty days, I don't know, but if it's twenty days times eight hours, times it's paid, it's three thousand forty bucks. If we paying for his full sick leave, so for everything that he has accumulated over the years and not used, it's fifteen thousand three hundred thirty-seven dollars and five cents.
You can't do that, we can't go get that one, come on. Motion to go ahead and pay him his twenty, or do it three thousand forty dollars, but I want to take it.
I have some pay.
Do it, Brandon?
What's up?
That's in revenue, I don't want to see, want you to leave that, he gets paid that on that. Okay. Donnie, well, Estelle down here, before we, before we go, that, that's everything, before we go on executive session.
You ain't got this woman, I don't know where she went, she left, she left that conference, she was. You give her the, I can work with her.
She was gonna give us a decision?
She was, I'll tell you, God, she was.
You just gonna give me a phone? Yes, lady, you can phone.
He's having it, he's looking in y'all's, instead of up front. Way up there.
Yeah, we don't.
He's already got the one up front, he was, they were hitting one of them. I bet he's already got anything, have you got Max's number?
Yeah.
Um, but this, at this time, we'll, we'll wait, we're gonna go, we're gonna go on executive session, before we go on executive. Before we go on executive session, uh, this budget transfer, number twelve dash double O one, what this is, the workers didn't get paid last week on account of the budget transfer. We've got three employees that have got overtime, I might have to check and read the names off, I don't know, I'm gonna do that anyway, but, uh. Before we go on executive session, this, we have a chance to talk, talk about this, so we're gonna go on executive session on, on transfer money, or so y'all get paid tomorrow, uh. Would you want to elaborate on that, would you want to say something before that?
Well, if the bill is not good, I got a problem. There's no reason that he should pay you, I mean, I don't understand why he should pay you. He should pay you because your name, and your line is, you got money in your line, he's, he's holding the whole county cautious because we're gonna make a, a transfer on certain people, that's, that's all.
No reason you can have any.
No reason.
Brandon, I was gonna ask you.
Okay, wait now, more than that here.
Can we not get paid, and once we got money in our line?
Or me, he, he, he's trying to, he, he's getting by with it up to now, but he can't, a lot. He's not gonna do that.
Okay, you done, you done pay your.
Do what? I'm gonna give you a price for what you, for what you. Damn, some man writes the checks. That's right, can he pay us too? Yeah, do what? Can he pay us too? If he wants to. You got money next?
Well, let's go, I, I, I need to go ahead and, uh, go, I consider maybe should go ahead and pay all the vendor's claim, maybe I didn't make that claim, well, it was added into the vendor. So, do y'all make a motion, go ahead and pay all the vendor's claim, look like to me, Donnie, it's a major bug as no one.
He said he's still staying, he's in his higher prepared.
Not on that, he said.
Think that one of the others was?
That one was four million, one million something.
Okay, at this time, I'm sorry, Jim, I, I thought you told him, I need to clarify, considering a motion to go to approve payment of all legal vendor claims. Should we have a motion, Roy Elphie?
That nine percent of won't be paid, if that's what you're considering. Did he just transfer, or just? That was nine percent of can be paid, at the end here, that's the way it is.
Okay, Roy Elphie, the main motion, pay all bidder claim, and I'll go ahead and second that motion, I'm sorry, Ellis Changer?
No.
You just told him he was gonna be paid?
I said you to pay, not me. Yes, you to pay, I said, yeah.
Was that the smartest of the market?
Now, you won't pay that one. I'm, I'm, I'm. I'm.
Donnie, you don't need to.
Probably as soon as this investigation over goes. What's it, dealing with us? You got, because you're in, you're in the middle of it too, both you guys. Of what investigation? Well. Send a mob, you want to send. I'm surprised they ain't even already been there yet. That'll come, they just. We, we, we're advised not to pay until it's over. Advised not to pay. That's right. What you need to do, guy, is sue his boss, he wants your money, you want to have to sue his boss. That's what he's got. Who's the investigation involved, what's it got to do with me, I've circled, I've got services rendered, and Mr. Moore sent right to my garage and guaranteed me he wouldn't pay me. Mr. Moore sure did, Mr. Moore also come back and told you, you better slow down, do that. When I was doing the work review, everything was fine, but then when I switched the Jeff, it wasn't fine no more. You didn't do that much work. I did a lot of work. Only, only problem, I see, you guys, Jim Bowles, is, is whether, uh, whether it was approved or not, that's the biggest problem. And I even told Tim, didn't I tell him? And I said, what am I supposed to do, they come here with the P O. I understand it's supposed to be, you might, you might advise us on this, about the contracts, were we supposed to have been aware of the contracts, and then been in under contract with these guys and know what's going on? Is that simple?
I've already stated what, probably decent evidence if pursued, and said, what, in the fiscal court meetings, I'll observe that, disturbing about an executive session where pending litigation.
I mean, you not got paid very time for all of this, uh, this, this. Why you pay your pay in all that shit?
I saw a problem.
Hey, bro, what you doing, bro, that's what matter to y'all, hey, bro?
I'm playing my game here, that's.
Good, no but it, thank you. Like we did once again, at least, I mean, it's pretty cool, that, that is, that you got a motion to say. That's right.
Sorry.
What, what are you going on?
Yeah, your name made the business.
Already said.
You want to go with this one too?
Yeah.
I just got one, does that, are you ready to ask you?
No, I don't.
Start with the else. Okay, I'm sorry, Donnie Bush?
What's the most? Pay the vendor.
I'll do some.
No.
Will you pay attention to that?
Yes, yes, teacher, I will. No.
Thirty minutes ago, we didn't have no trouble paying them, yes, you did.
Yeah, different one, if you ever.
Uh, we, we have one right here.
Alright, so, yesterday, um, let's kiss it here, yesterday, I got in contact with people at D L G about what's called House Build One Project, and it's pretty much, some of the money, they're trying to funnel towards counties that the cost savings fund is kind of drive up. Uh, but to get it, we had to have letters of concurrence from our, um, state senator and our state rep, so I said, our talk, Chris, he said, his office is working on theirs, and Brandon's office, Scott said, they're working on theirs, but what it is, is it's money we can use for certain things, and, um, one of the things, inmate housing and medical expenses. That's one of our biggest costs every year, you know, we got a little, four hundred thousand usually, and this grant, um, if approved, we will have, we will have three hundred eight thousand seven hundred ninety-three dollars twenty-one cents to spend towards medical and housing of inmates, so it'll take a huge chunk off of us. Um, one thing we need to remember though, uh, is that it's for two years, so we need to kind of spend it slow, that way we try to make it last a little longer, so it's three hundred eight thousand seven hundred ninety-three dollars twenty-one cents, now. I, it's all written up in the resolution, y'all, I gave y'all on your desk before you left, before you got in here. So, we need to pass that resolution, and it'll have the number here, two zero two two zero six two eight dash three. Um, and I can read that if y'all want me to, I mean, but it pretty much just lays it out, that after approval of D L G of our plans, our project, that they will award us up to three hundred eight thousand seven hundred ninety-three dollars.
Make that motion.
Before we get a second on that, you know, I thought, I thought that was grand idea, but if y'all took a million dollars away from, from funding other counties.
We gave a, let's put it like this.
Jail bills is gonna have to be paid.
They have to pay, and it's like, even if we don't have money for the electric bill.
Look at the whole, we're putting a million dollars back into the county, to the county economy, a million dollars, still, uh, politician's economy, we're putting it to the county.
We put it into the whole United States.
Hey, do you know what I'm facing that goal for, you know, that?
Sure, I don't get them that much from a county, they ain't that much.
Anyway, that ain't gonna do this.
This is just a grant for D L G.
Ray Moore made a motion to take the three hundred and eight thousand, I just recommending y'all maybe to look at, look at, but the jail bills is why you pay, where you take all of it like, right, so Ray Moore made a motion about second.
Second.
Ellis Changer?
Uh.
Donnie Bush?
Uh.
Roy Elphie?
Uh.
Ray Moore?
Uh.
Okay, at this time, go on, is it, we make a motion?
Could I have something before you go on executive session?
Okay.
Uh, I stopped over November, we agreed on, uh, building that, sure, that you all is gonna be ready, and we just wanna move into it, I'm looking another place to buy, I just wanna kind of update on what we're, what we can do, how we gonna be able to get in with the county builder.
With the county, before, before our little project, we'd always just done what we was gonna do, this time we kind of done that, or I had that done, and there wasn't a plumbing permit gotten, so when the building guy came in, he'll cease to all work on it, all they like to paint a few pieces of trim, it has to completely be re-stripped, bar wall, waterproof wall, I had spoke to, is he Fanning, is that his name?
Jerry.
Jerry, and asked him, was he be willing to go ahead and just re, redo what we've done, it's gonna cost around twenty thousand dollars, looked like, and, uh, he didn't seem to be much interested in that, that way.
It's, what's county gonna do with that building, it's gonna just sit.
I have, I have got about three or four people that found this, to then put a daycare in there.
It did spend sixty thousand dollars, without, without going to the state farm, or state mall, show them out, because what expects. So, I might, I might as well find me another property.
Yeah, I think so.
Unless you want us to.
And you, you never did get back, so it seems that's what he planned.
We gonna put money somewhere going on it, we ain't not.
But I think some may, you're.
That's a bit off.
Okay, at this time, I'm.
Should I say?
You go, many, Dick?
Good, excuse me, but I do like to clear something up with everyone here, if you'll let me talk for just a minute.
You have a hand?
I want to thank the three magistrates for voting to give the Rethick County Museum a hundred and fifty thousand dollars. This money isn't being thrown away, and I want to explain to you that the museum is our heritage, and everything in that museum, it's who we are, it's the Rethick County, the people of Rethick County, and it's our roots, and it's who we are. We've worked for eleven years to raise money on the old Rethick County Jail, and the jail belongs to the fiscal court, but we pay a dollar, um. We rent, and we pay a dollar a year for the jail, and during the last eleven years, we've raised all kinds of money, we've gone through three building phases. In, uh, March of two thousand and twenty-one, Governor Prussia, Dennis King, they awarded us a grant, an A R C grant, over three hundred thousand dollars to complete the renovation of the jail and move the Rethick County Museum into the jail. And the jail is on the National Register of Historic Places, and I don't believe a lot of people realize what we have with that old jail, it was built. It was built by the W P A, the stonework in that jail was hewn out of the mountainside by our ancestors, our grandfathers and our great-grandfathers. And we have a real jewel, a lot of people say, tear that old building down, what good is it? But that building is our heritage. And what's happened during the last three years, we got the grant, but we had to go through rural development to get it, they're our administrators. And it's taken a long time to finish it, and during that time, because of COVID, because of floods, because of tornadoes, you all talked about a while ago, the cost of building supplies have skyrocketed, and you all know that, you know what a piece of plywood would cost five years ago and what a piece of plywood would cost today. We have to have more money to finish this, and that's the money, that's where the money is going, that Donnie Bush brought up a minute ago, and the magistrate's voted to approve. And I'd like to thank you all again, and hopefully, within the next year, we'll have that building finished, and it'll be something that all of Brithick County can be proud of, we've got our revenue, that's adventure tourism. But our museum will be cultural tourism, and one is as important as the other. And I'd like to thank you all again. And this little lady here with me is Jane Hogg, she's on the museum board, her husband was Penny Hogg, the lawyer, and, uh, she was my teacher in high school. But I'd like to thank you all again, you've really done something that will help Brithick County when you guys have some...
If you haven't been to the Brithick County Museum on top of the senior citizens building, you ought to go, you will see some of your ancestors in that, in that exhibit.
And David here is with, uh, Crant, and he can vouch for us, they've worked really hard, Jennifer's worked really hard to help us raise money. We've raised our steps ninety-six thousand altogether, plus the hundred and fifty thousand you all gave, so thank you again.
All right, this time, motion to go ahead and execute.
Motion, second.
Go ahead, please. Three more? Bill Changer? Donnie Bush? Okay, if this time I consider a motion, then that is executive session.
Motion.
Three more?
Uh.
Bill Changer?
Uh.
Donnie Bush? Okay, first thing, uh, consider a motion to approve, uh, given, awarding the bid to Comfort System, uh, in amount of fourteen thousand four hundred dollars. And I think that Jim Seag was fourteen thousand eight hundred and...
Yeah.
Yes.
Motion.
Three more?
Uh.
Bill Changer?
Uh.
Donnie Bush?
Uh.
Well. Next thing, uh, consider a motion to, uh, do a budget transfer in amount of seventy-five hundred dollars, uh, camp number, zip number, number twelve dash zero zero three, uh, for the seventy-five hundred for the seater, for progress for, for first quarter.
Motion. Second.
Bill Changer?
Uh.
Donnie Bush?
Uh.
Go ahead, please.
Uh.
Three more?
Uh.
Next one is consideration approval of budget transfer number twelve dash zero zero one. Have a motion? Have a second?
Second.
Yeah. Donnie Bush?
Uh.
Go ahead.
Uh.
Three more?
Uh.
Bill Changer?
Uh.
Consideration approval of all payment, approval of payment of legal vendor claims.
I like, take up a few items on that, uh, player claims, vendor claims. Can't be in sales in amount of eleven hundred fifty-one dollars and fifty-four cents. Black steel, eleven thousand six hundred eighty-five dollars.
Wait, wait, just maybe get a little picture.
Slow down. Can't ten, sales, eleven hundred fifty-one dollars, fifty-four cents.
Okay, how much was that, eleven hundred and what?
Fifty-one dollars and fifty-four cents, can't ten sales. Uh, black steel, eleven thousand six hundred eighty-five dollars. C A Strong, nine thousand three hundred ten dollars. Comms Trucking, thirty-three thousand three hundred eighty-five dollars.
Thirty-three thousand what?
Three hundred eighty-five dollars.
Okay.
Gibson Escovate, fourteen thousand four hundred fifty dollars. Gilbert Escovate, ten thousand four hundred twenty dollars.
Gilbert?
Gilbert.
Gilbert.
Ten thousand four hundred twenty dollars, Gilbert. Craigland Land Proving, nineteen hundred twenty dollars. Miller and Son, two thousand dollars. Brithick Building and Farm Supply, twenty-six thousand seven hundred eighty-seven dollars and ninety-five cents. In the contract.
How much was that?
Twenty-six thousand seven hundred eighty-seven dollars and ninety-five cents. The life was in the contract, twelve thousand five hundred thirty-two dollars and forty cents. Take a look over, I missed one, complain with us.
Do we have a motion?
Motion. Second.
Bill Changer?
Uh.
Donnie Bush?
Uh.
Go ahead, please.
No.
Three more?
Uh.
I don't know, also, motion carried. Motion carried, I mean.
I'd say, I'd like to ask a question. I'd like to ask a question. How come you were calling him contract, because you bet he is, he's back home, Greg, he said, and you tell me, just take the equipment, go in the garage and do the stuff. And a week later, I went up and discovered the contractor doing it. What's the deal on that?
Why don't you put signs with it, you get all your signs put in?
Put signs. We put them...
You're working day?
No, I'm blocking that.
We didn't block in? Okay.
But, I guess you're asking a question, you know, why, you have a hard contract.
I ain't gonna...
Well, ain't for me, you know, I...
Ain't gonna risk that.
You ain't gonna risk that, you, you ain't...
Are we getting paid?
And, I ain't waiting, I ain't paying, you put in, a lot of them are emergencies, right?
You ain't a role for me, you're a worker.
I'm, 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 yeah.
Mo, motion carried, I mean.
Uh, well, I just ask you a question, you ain't got...
Say it, Donnie Bush?
Uh, you're gonna sit in back there, we're gonna say, you got...
Three more? Bill Changer?
Uh.
That's a man.